Okay, good afternoon, everyone. It's three o'clock. Calling the meeting to order. Mauricio.
Commissioner Joseph.
Present.
Commissioner Stuyvesant.
Here.
Commissioner Viscaro.
Here.
Vice Mayor Lama.
Here.
Mayor Satchin.
Here.
All members present.
Okay. I just heard from Manuel. That's our first item. He's running a little late, so we're just move on.
Okay. So, the next item is to be a scooter safety improvement community outreach update.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Commission, and city staff. How are you all doing today? Julio Daddel here, co-compliance manager. I am here to present to you and provide you with an update on the scooter safeties commission's findings. So, just to go over real quick, per, we're gonna go over the scooter safety committee, which was created recently, go over some of our research, our public outreach, where we are today, and then what our next steps are gonna be afterward. So, per the resolution that was passed by the city commission, 2025-3858, which was a response from Senate Bill 462, the city formed this scooter safety committee. This committee is comprised of several different departments within the city, co-compliance being one of them, planning and zoning, police, CCS, as well as media. We get together almost weekly, and we've been going over and looking into different areas where we can take action, including policy, regulation, public education, potential outreach, and infrastructure. This Senate Bill 462, which was passed, was made as a result of several safety concerns in different areas throughout Florida. And pretty much the three main points of emphasis for this Senate bill was to allow municipalities to create an age restriction, to allow for the regulation of requesting government IDs, and as well as being able to provide a safety class to any individual scooter riders. So, as a result, the committee was formed, like I mentioned, and we've been meeting and researching and doing some outreach to try to see what the best recommendations for policy we can come up with and bring to you in the future. So, currently through our research, we found out and we saw that actually not only here in the United States, I know this is a US map, but actually throughout the world, but yes, here in the United States as well, there's already been implementation of similar guidelines that were included in that Senate bill. A lot of states, as you see here in this map, some of them have already speed limit restrictions, which we've previously had in our previous ordinance, but they also have minimum age, whether or not they should ban, be banned on the sidewalk, on a street, DMV registration, and the requirement of a driver's license as, as I mentioned in the Senate bill as well. As far as Florida is concerned, the state of Florida doesn't have these specific regulations, and yes, they've left it to us, the cities, to be able to implement some of these per that Senate bill. And so, through a little bit of research locally, what I've found so far, you know, the Senate bill was passed this year, and it's only been a few months, so there really isn't a whole lot of municipalities that have adopted some of these regulations yet. But through some research, we have found Kibiskane did a total ban on scooters. They were proposed recently with an age restriction ban, but they opted to do a total ban at their most recent meeting on this. Palm Beach County just recently passed for age restriction to require IDs and a sidewalk ban for micro mobility devices. Doral also just recently created a resolution to request their city attorney to draft a ordinance that would require an age restriction and a requirement for IDs. Sorry about that. Collier County, for e-bikes only, they have a current age restriction and for certain types of e-bikes, as well as a sidewalk ban, and the same thing with Palm Beach, or Palm Coast, rather. For e-bikes only, they have age restrictions and ID requirements. Miami Beach, I recently found out, hasn't implemented yet, but the day before we did our town hall, Miami Beach actually performed a town hall for micro mobility devices as well. So, I don't know if that's a sign of something coming or not, but just something that we'll keep an eye out as we go through this process. So, our public outreach consisted of various, various methods. We, the first thing, the biggest thing is creating the scooter survey where we've asked the community many different questions to try to gauge their, how they feel. Some of the regulations should lie, to also try to get some more input as to how scooters are being used, who's using them, for what purpose, so on and so forth. But mainly to see what was the support behind an age restriction, ID requirements, and so on. So, we put this scooter survey online. We've disseminated it through very different means. We made it available in English, Spanish, and Russian. We've created flyers as well in reference to the survey, social media posts, websites, put it on The Islander, text notifications, push notifications, email blasts for CCS, the CCS list, the city's email list, and we also send it to all the scooter, registered scooter owners as well, really trying to get every single demographic that we can to get the best response possible. Additionally, we also went or provided information for the Survey National Night Out at a recent helmet giveaway that the PD always does, we're all familiar with, and the scooter debates that you were all there. Thank you very much for that, for your support, and the PTSA meeting that was going on at the same night. We had somebody for code there presenting and promoting the survey and trying to get as much results as possible. So, a great scooter debate was on September 10th, where we hosted two individual debates. Again, thank you for your support and attending. Here, we provided a real robust information to all the residents in reference to a little bit history of the scooters, why we're having this discussion today, provided them an opportunity to speak and voice their opinions, provided them an opportunity to engage with the rest, with us and with the rest of the residents, and show kind of where they're, where they're feeling at with, with certain regulations. We put up an interactive survey where they could see what other individuals' responses were anonymously, and so on. And as I mentioned previously, we had a representative at the PTSA meeting as well. So, some of the results of the scooters, of the scooter survey, and some of the results that we've obtained also in that meeting, or in that debate, I'm gonna go over with you now. So, we've had a total of 1,828 responses to date. This is as of September 13th recently. This is the most results the city has ever obtained in any survey that it's done before. So, we've, we've reached our goal, which is we're really getting a lot of good responses. In one of our questions, which is whether or not a particular household has a scooter or there's a scooter in the household, out of the individuals that responded, we got 62% that did not have a motorized scooter in their household, but 37% did. So, we're getting a good representation, because not everybody does have a scooter in your household. And we're getting almost 40%, that's a pretty good representation and a sample size of, you know, the individuals and a great response. To the question of whether or not the scooters are registered, for those who have scooters in their household, it was, it was good to see that 83% of individuals that responded to this survey did register with us, which shows, you know, our commitment to, and police's commitment and code's commitment to continuing efforts to the existing regulations that we have for registration and so on. So, this was a good indication for, for compliance with our current regulations, which is great. So, as far as the type of route that are mostly used for scooters, 88% of scooter riders says that they, said that they do use sidewalks, and with 63% saying they use bike lanes. Then we had, as far as the support for a minimum age restriction, 85% of respondents said that they would support a minimum age restriction to support scooter regulation. And this is, this is very interesting, because like I mentioned earlier, you know, out of the respondents, 40% of them own scooters, and we're still getting some support for an age restriction, even amongst certain individuals that own scooters or have scooters within their household. Out of the, what, what type of age, 16 seems to be the, not by much, you know, there's a lot of varying responses, obviously, but 16 seems to be the, the one that's leading right now as far as the, the one that's most supported. In reference to requiring a government ID, 75% of respondents support a government ID per the results. As far as banning scooters from the sidewalk, we have support by 67% of the respondents to support a ban on sidewalks for scooter riders. And that was our last result, which I'm sharing with you today. The survey does, oh, sorry. The total ban for scooters, so this is the last question. We have a, we had a question whether or not they would support a total ban on scooters, and only 41% support that currently. So, following today, our next step is, we're gonna go ahead and close the scooter survey on September 22nd. We're gonna evaluate all the findings, not only from the survey, but from the research that we've done. We're going to analyze the potential regulations and how they correlate with the responses that we've obtained. We're gonna explore what the potential options would be to those regulations that we may bring forth as, to recommend, and we will be proposing those recommendations as well. See where we go from here.
Okay, thank you. It's very comprehensive. I think that you all did a very good job in engaging, as, as shown with the amount of respondents. And if we can get, you know, 500 more by the 22nd, you know, the more we get, the better information we have. From the commission, who has questions? Who'd like to start? Go ahead, Commissioner Joseph.
I only have a question, because we're now into, speaking of scooters for almost two years now, and trying to get out information regarding safety and all. Our police department has spent numerous hours and at a large expense regarding enforcement that basically it's been unenforceable at this time. So, I'm just thinking, going forward, how are we going to make this enforceable when it hasn't been quite as enforceable as we hope, you know, up to this point?
And those are some of the things we will be exploring. You know, we'll be seeing how other municipalities are doing their enforcement. And again, depending, it depends on which regulations we eventually recommend, what that enforcement type will be.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else?
Yes.
Go ahead.
So, yes, we've, to your comment, we've been talking about this for a long time, like, but we didn't have the tools to really do anything about it. So, now that the law changed, we're able to actually have this conversation. Before, we were trying to carve out what we could. I mean, I would, I think it would be better if the state took the lead completely, but they haven't. And so, by leaving it to the cities, at least they open the door and we can do something with it. I was curious, I really liked, I really liked this map a lot. And I was curious also if, I guess it would be more in line with the, with the chart, with the checkmarks. How many cities had attempted a local registration program like we did? Just, just, I'm just curious about that. Do you know?
Through, I don't, I don't mean, I don't know a specific number, but I do know through, you know, our research and looking at different codes from different municipalities to try to see which ones had implemented certain things. A lot of them have had that. And as a matter of fact, Marco Island, while they're not doing anything that we're doing specifically with age restrictions, I think they're proposing a registration as well. So, some of them are still in the process of proposing similar regulations.
Okay. Well, what I, I was just curious, but I liked that, that particular group was sent an invitation to, to participate, because they're clearly the ones that are invested in, like, they're, they're truly invested. It's not just bothered or, you know, and, and the, and the responses that we got, knowing that the registered users were a significant part of it, I find very, very telling. I was surprised to, to see that the majority don't want the total ban, because what we hear is always the complaints, and so you don't know how much of that is, is representative of, of the whole pie. And I was surprised to see that the majority don't want a total ban. But clearly, there is a, a need for, for better regulation. And if we, and the enforcement part for us has been, if you don't want them on the sidewalk, because I don't wanna see them on the sidewalk. I don't wanna see electric bikes on the sidewalk. I don't see any bikes. But then, if the alternative is the street, and we're talking about a 10-year-old, and we don't wanna be the city that puts the 10-year-old on the street. But then, we become the city that puts senior citizens in, in a difficult position navigating their sidewalks with a 10-year-old going 20 miles an hour, right? So, that's, and that's sort of, you know, where, where we've lived. So, I, I really like the idea, and I, I, you know, I'm a, I like data, and I, so this, this makes me feel better with the age restriction, because once, once you, you make it, I think it's, it's like a, like a learner's permit. You know, if you're, if you can drive a car, you can be on a scooter, right? So, if, if we have from 16 and up, then we don't have to worry about putting the 10-year-old on the street, because the 10-year-old's not gonna be on the scooter anymore. If we, if we manage scooters like vehicles in, in the sense of enforcement, I know it's different, but, but if you see a 10-year-old driving a car, you're not gonna say, "Well, they have places to go," right? You're, you're gonna do something about it. And I think we need to change our, our approach around that. I know that we've had significant enforcement, and I know it's made a difference. I know we've had citations. We get the monthly reports. So, and it's been a challenge, because it's the police, but it's really you guys. It's really a code enforcement issue. It's been a, a partnership. I, I, I'm very, I'm very happy with, with, with the fact that there's been so many responses that the people who registered are, their scooters participated as well as they did. And I, I like being surprised. I was not expecting some of these outcomes, but that's why it's important to have the community input, because we may do our best, right? We, we talk to people, but we, we may not get it right. So, the efforts, I think, were worthwhile and, you know, good job.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Yeah, thank you very much for this. This is very insightful, and I'm glad that we have a task force assigned for this. It's a very important issue. Two things jump out at me, like, okay, the question is, how can scooters and pedestrians and drivers coexist, right? My question is, from a physical standpoint, what can we do with our roads where we create special lanes for scooters, bikes, et cetera, right? Where we keep the pedestrians, the cars, and the scooters separate as much as possible? So, that's one. And then, the other thing is that, obviously, everybody has a motorized scooter, right, or bikes. I even see these kids with like these, like, I, I wouldn't call them, yeah, they're like, they're like motorized bikes, you know? Like, I, I see them doing wheelies, like dirt bikes, right? They're, and, and I'm concerned about that too, because I see them all the time zigzagging in and out, and it's like, it's like three or four of them going around and, or more. And they don't respect anything at all. So, I think that we need some sort of age restriction if there's gonna be a vehicle with an engine on it, with some sort of motor, okay? So, we definitely need an age restriction. And then, from the standpoint of the state, I think the state, we need to have them go through a DMV application. If they're gonna be using a, a motorized vehicle where they're going fast, and they need to be able to understand the rules of the street or the sidewalks, they need to go through the process that a driver would go through, you know, a driver of, of a car would go through. So, that's, that's another one. And then, I'll be curious to know how the, the implementation of some of these restrictions does bears in the other municipalities, especially for like Palm Beach County, where you have an age restriction.
It's the town of Palm Beach.
The town of Palm, I'm sorry, town of Palm Beach, yeah, okay. And then, let me see, what else? And I think, yeah, that's about it. But yeah, the, the question is, how do we keep them separated, right? Or how can they coexist without, you know, bumping into each other, no pun intended, you know? And then, another concern I have is that if we take them off the sidewalks, and then you have kids on the street, or let's say even we have an age restriction, we have a 16-year-old, or even an adult, where they're sharing with a car going maybe 40, 50 miles an hour, I'm very concerned about that. And I know that our police department is also very concerned with having these scooters going on the actual streets where the cars are driving. It's unfortunate that, you know, from a space standpoint, some of our, like the Collins Avenue and some of our streets are narrow. But I think that if we could find a way to create a space for them where they could transit, I think it'll be great. So, let's put some resources, look into that, and I think that, that's a solution, really. How do you keep them separated?
Yeah, that's something we received some feedback on, and we're, we're currently also researching. And I, I know a lot of the emphasis has been on scooters when we talk about this issue, but it's really a micro mobility issue, and we've been looking at both, and we are gonna provide recommendations, you know, for both e-bikes and scooters.
If, if I may just add something, like, I, I know that we've already looked at, at this, and like, there's areas like North Bay Road where it's wider that we can do that. And, you know, I've always been very, very protective of, of that part of North Bay Road and Plaza of the Americas and Puerto Belaja, because it is very pleasant the way that it is. But I definitely, especially when we're looking at that part as where trucks can be dropping off vehicles, I'd much rather create the space for, for the micro mobility part there than to have a bunch of trucks dropping, bringing vehicles there. So, but I know we've already looked at that, and, and I agree. I think we need to, like, take the next step.
Yeah, thank you.
Commissioner Joseph?
Yeah, that's my only question, the timeline. What was next?
So, what's next is we're gonna evaluate everything. Like I said, we have weekly meetings, so at our next meeting next week, we're really gonna go through all the findings, kind of put everything together along with the results or the research that we've done with other municipalities, because some of these things have just recently happened. Like, within last month, some of these ordinance were just, you know, or resolutions just took place. The survey closes on, on, on Monday, so we'll have all of those results in. Yeah, hopefully, we'll obtain more results, more participants. And then, we're gonna bring it back with our recommendations, you know, shooting for maybe November.
Okay, thank you.
Before you go, I, I did have a few questions of the city attorney. Anything that we implement, these are all gonna be civil, we can't put in any criminal ordinances?
No, they're not criminal per se. Some of them fall under state statute. So, a lot of the regulations you have now are mimicked by also state statute. So, when we say, you know, not put the scooters in the street, the state actually puts them in the street. Our issue comes to controlling the sidewalks. So, by default, they're in the street. So, it's not necessarily us doing that. A lot of the regulations, our state helmet, for example, but we do have our own ordinance, which gives us a little bit more flexibility. And we've added some things in there as well. The speed limit is also in the state, but we can control what the speed is. So, it really depends, but they're, they're not, they're non-criminal traffic infractions from the state standpoint. And then, from our ordinance standpoint, they're just a violation of our ordinance, which we process through Chapter 14 through code enforcement.
And is there anything that we are preempted from doing, or is it completely up to us?
You are, when it comes to, the vice mayor mentioned certain motorbikes and those types of things, where there are dirt bikes and things of that sort. If it's got a gas engine and it has a certain amount of CCs, that's completely preempted to the state. So, we're really relegated to regulating electric motors, scooters, e-bikes, those types of things.
But for clarification, those dirt bikes, they're supposed to be on the street, not on the sidewalks?
Oh, correct.
Right, okay. So, if they're on the sidewalks, then we can obviously cite them. And is that a criminal?
You can, but no, none of these are criminal.
Okay.
Yeah. They're all non-criminal traffic infractions, either under state law, or they're violations of our ordinance, which wouldn't be criminal and it would be civil penalty.
Okay. And Mr. City Manager, I'm assuming that when this is presented to us in November, there's obviously gonna be some sort of budget amendment required? Or do you foresee us not needing to do that?
Yes, when we do our assessment, we'll also include the budget aspect of it and present that to you as part of the package.
Okay. And then, lastly, of the citations that we issued, you know, and again, I know that our goal is not to cite people. Our goal is for them just to follow the rules. But what, what is the cost? What is each citation? And how much have we collected? Do you know offhand?
I don't know how much we've collected offhand, but it's a staggered citation. So, the first one's like 25, 50, 100, 500. And so, yeah, it's not a, a one or two.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
I have a quick question.
Let Commissioner Joseph go, and then Vice Mayor.
So, basically, code enforcement is the primary agency that's catching these kids that are maybe not registered or whatever?
Primarily, the, the initial enforcement is done by the police department, because code enforcement is not allowed to detain the individuals or stop the individuals when they're, you know, driving. So, their primary, the primary agency that they meet with first is the police department. Police department issues them a warning. That warning is given to us so that we can do the rest of the enforcement through our special magistrate process.
Okay. So, that's what I was might actually trying to get at, because now we're also discussing cost and time for our police department when they might be needed doing something else. And here we are, we're after, and we don't know how many kids get by that, you know, it's kind of like people at the border, right? And we had open borders and people getting by and, you know, so. So, we don't know, if you go to stop one kid on a scooter, how many are scooting by that should also be stopped? So, and then also to verify the age, a lot of these children don't carry ID. So, how would you ever verify their age? That's another issue to deal with. And in all of this, it's an officer's time that we're considering as well.
Yes, it will be considering, you know, obviously, what we've done so far and, you know, what, what the potential ways of enforcement that could be, you know, most efficient.
But it could be in the end that we have some decision that enforcement is really not possible or very limited.
We'll see. We're not there yet, but.
Right.
Okay.
Vice Mayor?
So, um, going back to the, um, you know, you have bi, I mean, um, bikes with an engine, gas engine. How, how do those, how are those enforced? I mean, they would have to have a license, right? If it's a gas, so our police department can, yeah.
Right, yeah, police department deals with that, uh, and that's strictly under state law.
That's strictly under state law, okay.
Those are registered, they're supposed to be registered.
And they're supposed to have a license, right? A, a license plate?
Well, right, typically, yes, depending, I mean, I'm sure there's some that kind of fall under the radar, but, um, uh, typically, yes. And, um, when I say registered, I mean registered as a vehicle under the state laws, which for scooters and e-bikes, they're not required to be registered as a vehicle under state law. So we're limited there as well. That's why we created a registration program on our own.
Correct, correct. And also, I'm, I'm curious to know, I, I was able to attend the one PM town hall. And, um, I'm curious to know what was the audience demographic for the six PM? Did we get more parents and kids?
We, we didn't get the, the, the amount of people we would have hoped, first of all. But I do believe out, out of the people that we did get, um, we got more individuals that were, uh, that were scooter owners or had kids with scooters, because we had, we had a pretty good, uh, we had a longer debate or comment session than, than in the earlier day where there were more people. So, um, we also, in addition to, uh, sending the survey out to all the registered scooter owners, we also sent a specific, uh, blast out to invite them to this, to this, uh, debate. Because, yeah, we're hoping for good turnout from everyone.
Commissioner Stoverson?
Okay, and just two points, um, regarding us being the ones who put the kids on the street. I know that by law, it's the state, but by enforcement, it ends up being us. You know, and that's what I meant. Um, and, and enforcement is gonna be the issue no matter which way we go. Uh, no matter where, if, if it gets banned all the way or age, whatever we do, the challenge, um, is always gonna be the enforcement piece and to, you know, how rigorous it's gonna be and then, uh, you know, what resources we're gonna throw at it. So, um, I think that's just gonna be an ongoing conversation. So, but that's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We, uh, we're looking forward to November. Thank you.
Appreciate it, as always.
Okay. Uh, I believe Emmanuel is here?
Yes, so we're gonna go back to two A, which is a proclamation issued to Emmanuel Machado.
Okay, so, um, I'm glad we have some people in the audience. We normally don't have a lot of people during this time. Um, on July twenty-seventh, I don't know if, if you all remember, there was a vehicle crash. It was on Bayview Drive. A Tesla that, um, I would say it fell, but it drove into the water. I think that's, I don't remember another time where we had a car land in the water. Um, and Emmanuel Machado, who was working in the area very bravely, um, jumped in to, to help, which is really incredible, you know? And, and we talk a lot in the city about community and about helping each other. And we give a lot of, you know, proclamations and recognitions to people. Uh, but this is different. I think that this really shows how important it is for us to take care of each other. Um, and, you know, this was his instinct. Uh, he didn't have any connection to these people, uh, and he was working. Um, and I think this might be, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. City Clerk, this is the first time that the entire commission cosponsored a proclamation? Yeah, so, uh, yeah, this is a first for us. Um, so before we read the proclamation, I don't know if some of the commissioners wanted to speak and say a few words?
Yes.
Please go ahead.
First of all, thank you. Uh, thank you so much for, for doing what you did and, and for, uh, putting others the, the, the need that others had in that moment, um, uh, making that a priority and jumping in there. That's amazing that you did that. Uh, and obviously, we, we, we all want to honor you, but I also want you to know that I received phone calls. It's not just us, it's the, the community wants you to be honored. I received phone calls saying, you guys better recognize this guy. This is amazing what he did. Uh, so it's, it's beyond us. You, what you did was, was really amazing and appreciated not just by the people you saved, but by the community. So thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Yeah, thank you very much for, for what you did. Um, watching that video is incredible. And, um, yeah, it's just amazing that you didn't hesitate. You just, you know, looked and, and, and went in to, to do something great. Yeah, thank you very much.
We see so many instances these days of people, when there's an incident, that just sit there or pull out their cell phone and videotape rather than leaping to action. So I want to thank you. Uh, you have it in your soul to help people and you, you're just a super fellow. Thank you.
It's good to have you around. So thank you for being there and doing what you did. You're the best.
Uh, if you can read it and then we'll take a picture.
So the proclamation reads, whereas on July twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five, a serious vehicle crash occurred in the city of Sunny Hills Beach, resulting in a vehicle plunging into a canal near Bayview Drive and Collins Avenue. Whereas despite the danger and urgency of the situation, Emmanuel Machado acted swiftly and selflessly to assist those involved in the crash, helping ensure that all occupants of the submerged vehicle escaped safely and without injury. Whereas Emmanuel Machado's courageous actions exemplify the highest standards of civic responsibility, bravery, and compassion, serving as an inspiration to the residents and visitors of the city. Whereas the city recognizes and deeply appreciates individuals who go above and beyond to protect and serve their community in moments of crisis. Whereas Emmanuel Machado's quick thinking and heroic response contributed directly to the safe outcome of a potentially tragic incident, and his actions deserve public recognition and gratitude. Now therefore do I learn suspicion as mayor and on behalf of the city commission of the city of Sunny Hills Beach hereby proclaim September eighteenth, twenty twenty-five as Emmanuel Machado Day in the city of Sunny Hills Beach.
We don't always agree up here, but on this, we definitely did unanimously. It takes diving into the water to, yes, to agree on something.
Maybe you wanna say a few words? You wanna say a few words? No, you're good?
Okay, uh, next item.
Okay, so the next item that we have is, uh, discussion items three A, discussion regarding Senate Bill one eighty, chapter two, uh, two thousand twenty-five, one ninety, the laws of Florida.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, um, back in August, early August, I sent the memo to you all with regards to Senate Bill one eighty, which came out of the latest legislative session. As indicated in there, it's highly impactful, not, not only the city, but every single county and every single city in the state of Florida. Uh, what it generally does, without getting into too many specifics, it prevents us and other cities and counties from amending or even proposing to amend our land development regulations or comprehensive plan in a way that's going to be more restrictive or more burdensome than it currently is. As an example, we had a landscaping ordinance that was coming to you with regards to implementing some landscape regulations through the city, which had to be tabled because of this, because it's more restrictive. Uh, the reason I bring this up as a discussion beyond what I've explained in the memo is because of its impact. And now we're actually set back a little bit. It's retroactive to August first, twenty twenty-four. And because of the three storms we had, basically Debbie, Helene, and Milton, um, were foreclosed from doing those, any of those amendments until twenty twenty-seven, October first, twenty twenty-seven. And thereafter, they created a statute where every year thereafter, if you're considered an impacted city based on their formula, and you become part of a declaration because of a hurricane, and every year we typically are part of some sort of storm somewhere, even if it's not a direct hit. Every year thereafter, for an entire year, you'll have those same restrictions as long as we get a hurricane. So it's very impactful. It's, it's basically taking away, and, and the only exception is if a resident brings a proposed change to the land development regulations, if it's initiated by your citizens, it's okay. But if you initiate it, it's not. There's a huge home rule issue there that has resulted in a lot of jurisdictions uh, pulling together to try to litigate this. So currently, uh, there's a lawsuit that's formulating. Uh, the last time I checked, there were eight cities and two counties that were joining. Uh, and so this is to ask you whether you want to join in the fight or not. Now, as I typically say, with these litigation, it matters. Whatever happens in this litigation, you'll be the beneficiary of it if it turns out favorable. But there may be a benefit here with numbers, as how many jurisdictions join in. There is a cost to this, though. There's an initial buy-in of ten thousand dollars for the actual litigation. It would be an additional five thousand dollars if it goes on appeal. And then an additional five thousand dollars if it goes to the Florida Supreme Court. The maximum output you'd have to do for this, if it goes all that way, would be twenty thousand dollars. I bring this as a discussion item, because I'd have to bring it back to you in a resolution that would actually authorize us to join the lawsuit. But I wanted to discuss it with you to see, to get some feedback before I engage the attorney to, to get us ready to set us up as a plaintiff in this litigation.
So you mentioned if, if a citizen or resident, rather, um, brings something, so a single person can come in front of the commission and make a request?
Well, you can have, you can have community-based initiatives with regards to, so let's say that, uh, there was, um, through your code, uh, citizens would come through and propose an ordinance, uh, for you to do landscaping improvement. And you all in agreement with that, and it goes through the, your, your code process where it's initiated by the citizens, that would be okay. But if you initiate the same thing on your own without the citizens initiating it, it's not.
Okay, but we don't have that mechanism in place right now?
We do.
We do?
Yeah.
Okay. And does that person need to be, um?
Well, it's not just a person. I mean, it's, it's an arduous process. It's kind of, uh, I don't have it in front of me, but it's, it's, it's a pretty arduous process to bring an ordinance before you, a, a citizen initiated.
But we don't have anything that allows one person to come before us and initiate?
I don't know that there's a specific number, but it's, it's sort of, it's.
It's not that easy, is what you're saying?
It's not easy and it rare, I've seen it happen once my entire career.
Okay.
And it failed.
Okay, all right, um, so.
But the crux of it is here that you, the work currently, as with many jurisdictions and counties, even some that we represent, are in the midst of their comp plan amendments and, and land development regulation amendments. And for us as an example, what we're doing and what we've just done with the east side of Collins, um, those that you just approved, I think we're okay there, because what we're actually doing is more permissive since we're grandfathering in what was done previously in excess of what your comp plan permitted. But when we get to the west side of Collins, we're, we're gonna run into issues. Does anything that is deemed, and of course, the statute doesn't define what more restrictive or more burdensome means. So it's very subjective. Um, anything that's deemed to be more restricted than what's currently on the books is essentially barred. So a lot of cities and counties are dead in the water with regards to their amendments at the one eighty.
Okay. All right, we'll start on this side first. Commissioner Stoverson?
Can we share your microphone, please? Thank you.
For me, I know that we spend tens of thousands of dollars on consultants in order to, uh, rework our comprehensive and land management plans. Um, so I would say that the twenty thousand dollars that we put into this um, project would, uh, be well worthwhile.
And, and for clarification, why is there, how do we know it's a twenty thousand cap? Because I imagine if this keeps going, it would be well over that.
No, what, what this firm does typically, and they, they've done the gun lobby, uh, uh, litigation, they've done a variety of those throughout the state. There's an initial, if they reach ten, they, they set a, an amount for jurisdiction. And once they reach ten, which they have, they have eight cities, two counties.
It covers it then?
It covers it. So at that point, it's the same cost for everyone.
Got it. So where, it will be guaranteed twenty thousand and no more?
Correct. And, and that's only if it goes to the Supreme Court. And again, I'm, I can't tell the future, but I'm hopeful, because this is so onerous and so overreaching, that I'm hoping with the litigation initiated and with the legislative, the next legislative session, there'll be some kind of cleanup bill, because I don't know if that was the intended consequence, but this is very, very, very far-reaching.
Okay.
Vice Mayor?
Yeah, so, so in effect, this, uh, this bill will annul any of our efforts to, you know, clean up our comp plan, our land development regulations.
Not completely annulled. Not, it's, it's not completely annulled, but we do have to go a line, do a line by line and determine. And we've done that with some things that have come before you. The last one was at the last meeting with regards to some of the changes we made with the, uh, the setbacks, for example, the restrictions with the setbacks. There's some things we had to pull out of there because it was more restrictive than what was previously on the books. So we have to do a line by line and we're gonna have to sit down and take a look and see, depending on what the proposals are going to be with regards to the west side of Collins, we'll have to determine what we can and cannot do. Some of it may be more permissive or neutral in that sense. Um, but it's, 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 it's gonna make it more challenging.
And this bill was enacted when? About a year ago?
No, just, it just became effective July of twenty twenty-five. It's retroactive to August first.
To August first.
So let's say you had, uh, I'll use the landscaping ordinance again. If you had passed that October of twenty twenty-four, technically it would be void automatically, because it's more restrictive than what you have in the books.
Okay.
And the, the problem you have here, which is a liability for the city, is any of your residents can sue you for injunctive relief, saying that you're violating SB one eighty or the statute that was created.
Because something we did last year.
Something you did last year, and they get injunctive relief, and then if they prevail, they get attorney's fees and costs.
Oh, okay.
They end up having to pay that. So that's, that's sort of the punishment there if you proceed with something that's not supposed. Besides the fact that you wouldn't be able to enforce it.
Do we know who was behind this bill?
I don't.
What forces were behind this bill?
Candidly, I think it came from after the hurricane. I think it was Milton that hit the west coast really hard.
Yeah.
I think there were, there's maybe some efforts on the west coast where some buildings were demolished that they didn't want rebuilt, because they didn't like the buildings to begin with. And they started imposing a lot of restrictions and making changes that prevented rebuilding.
Uh huh.
And I think the, maybe the, the original impetus was genuine, but the result is just, like I said, if it, I don't think it was intended, but it's, it's way too far reaching.
Is, is this similar to what happened in California?
I don't know what happened.
Well, with the, uh, all the houses that were destroyed and that they're now unable to build back to what they, uh, originally had because there's new regulation.
Yeah, similar. I mean, it happens in a lot of communities, because let's say a building was built sixty, seventy years ago, your building code has changed. Yeah, similar. I mean, it happens in a lot of communities because let's say a building was built sixty, seventy years ago, your building code has changed.
Right.
If it gets destroyed in a hurricane or through some other natural disaster or fire or anything. Uh, it's very hard to rebuild because you have to rebuild under the new. Building code and the new flood elevations and so on and so forth. So it's difficult unless sometimes with historical structures, there's some leeway. But it gets difficult that a building that's old and gets destroyed to rebuild it as is because of the new regulations.
Uh, so Vice Mayor, are you in support?
Yeah, yeah, I'm definitely in support. I mean, yeah, for sure.
And again, I'll bring it back to you as a resolution, so you'll get to formally vote on it. So if there's any change.
I just wanted to make sure that you had the uh Commission of Iscar?
No, I think my my questions have been answered. I was just gonna ask um if we're not, but I think we are comfortable like being a party, but if if we weren't. Um, if maybe there was a way to contribute without having to be a party. But. I think I think that ship sailed here already, so um I'm I'm okay with it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Maricia?
Okay, the next item is a discussion. Regarding the Atlantic Isle Bridge Restoration Rehabilitation Project cost sharing with the Florida Department of Transportation.
Okay, who's presenting that?
That's me.
Okay.
Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor Commission. Um, back in two thousand eighteen, um, this commission approved an agreement with FDOT to rebuild, repair, rebuild. The historic Atlantic Isle Bridge. Um, it's been in disrepair for many years. We made it a single lane. Um, limited the weight, but it needed to be rebuilt. I mean repaired. Um, after they did all of their studies, um, it's now going to take a full rebuild. So our cost share that was required is twenty five percent in two thousand eighteen. That was one million twenty three thousand dollars four hundred and nine. One million twenty three thousand four hundred and nine dollars, which was paid in April of uh twenty twenty four. They now are going to need another six hundred and ninety three thousand three hundred and fifty four dollars for our portion. Um, which is still twenty five percent of the total project cost. But they need that commitment from us prior to them proceeding any further with the design of of this. Bridge rebuild.
What happens if we don't agree?
Um, it's gonna become a pedestrian bridge only. And then other work would have to be done to make a cul-de-sac U-turn at both ends of that bridge.
Which would be our responsibility?
Yes.
And what would that the cost be approximately if you had to ballpark it?
I really couldn't, but probably very close to the million.
That's my question.
Plus the inconvenience to the residents that live in that area.
Do we have any feedback from those residents?
They, we did have, they had a meeting, FDOT had a meeting with the resident group, also with the Historic Preservation Board. Both of which approved of the conceptual design of the full rebuild. They will still keep the historic elements. So it will try to look as much like the historic bridge that it is. So they'll take some of the rock or rock and put it back on the facade. Um, but structurally, it's gonna be a completely new bridge.
So at what point does it stop being historic? How much rock does it have to keep? Of the original bridge until it's no longer that bridge?
So FDOT is required and they did go through the state's Historic Preservation Board. To get approval for this process. So it will still remain historic.
So we're we're saddling future commissions with this as?
Regardless of, you own the bridge technically.
Right.
So the agreement in two thousand eighteen gave them. Authority over the bridge so that they could do this work.
Right.
And we had to cost share. Um, so if we don't do this, you're gonna be fully responsible for whatever happens to the bridge. So you'd have to go through a process to get it. Undesignated, historic. And then come up with something else you'd wanna do. And throughout that entire process, all of that, and whatever you do is probably gonna cost you more than one point seven million dollars.
What is the actual start date now?
They don't. This is their five-year work plan.
Right.
So they are committing. Thank you for asking because that brings up another point. We had anticipated. Well, we had anticipated some price increases and had budgeted in the CIP for FY twenty seven, an additional five hundred thousand dollars. We would need to advance that. So you will have a budget amendment on the next commission meeting. Um, to advance that to this fiscal year plus add another hundred and ninety three thousand dollars. Three hundred and fifty four.
Do you have any other questions?
Well, this reminds me of uh our undergrounding with FPL, which we should actually. Where we're getting charged additional now by FDOT, we should have have had. Some provision to charge back FPL for their delinquent. You know, work and finishing. So, you know, it goes both ways. Unfortunately, we're on the wrong side this time.
Okay, Commissioners Stuverson?
I have a question. So uh the options are, we either continue with FDOT to, you know, reconstruct a historical bridge, right? It'll be a new.
Rebuild, completely rebuild, yes.
Rebuild with the same historical look.
Correct.
More or less, right?
It'll be, yes.
Close as possible.
Okay, as close as possible. Or we say no. And then we're fully responsible. We'll have to go through the process of taking it off a historic designation. And then build a bridge on our own.
With consultants and all?
Yes.
And you don't wanna go there?
No, 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 I'm 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 just trying to get uh the options clear and um. Is there a way we could get a grant uh for this, for our portion, since it's a historic?
We can, we can look into that.
Yeah.
I'm not aware of anything, but we can look into that.
Yeah, let's see if we could get a grant if there's something out there since it's a historic bridge. See what the state has or or the county. I'm not sure.
Or the county with the budget deficit.
Commissioner of this this guard?
Be so lucky on that end.
Yeah.
Okay. Do you have everything you need?
I do, thank you. You'll have an item next month.
Okay, alright, next item?
The next item is a discussion regarding um chapter twenty six amendments to chapter twenty six, uh the election code. So Mayor Commissioners, um as you recall, back in uh May of twenty twenty three, there were some charter amendments. Uh, that were approved by the electorate of of the city. Among those were some that related to the election code and the elections of the city. Um, so this is being brought forward to you as a discussion item first, just so that you have ample time to be able to digest it, read through it. Um, see if there's any other sections that you may want to amend. But the ones that that we're proposing right now are primarily to. Uh, be consistent with the the city's charter and also to update the code itself so that it reflects. Uh, best practices or current practices that the city currently has and to also provide some clarification to to some of the sections. So what I'll do right now is I'll just go briefly through each section that's being amended. Um, I'll try to be as concise and as clear as possible. So if you have any questions, just feel free to 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 stop. So the first change that I want to bring to your attention is in section twenty six dash five. Um, it's titled Kevin Seem Board. So in this section, what we're doing is we're proposing that the Kevin Seem Board be increased to be four members. Right now, the code currently provides for the Kevin Seem Board to be comprised of. The city clerk, the city manager, and an electorate, a voter of the city. I'm sorry, just the voter. So we're proposing to add an alternate. Um, that would be in the case that one of the original three members isn't available to attend the. Kevin Seem Board meetings. Uh, they can step in and and participate. And they would only participate if one of the original three isn't available.
I have a question regarding that.
Yes, sir.
Where does, where do those people come from, the two people?
So that's one of the things that I'm also clarifying is that they have to be voters of the city. So voters of the city, um, and it'll be based on my recommendation to the commission.
So you would be finding those two people?
Yes, sir. Yeah. Okay.
Oh, it's upon recommendation or?
Upon upon my recommendation to the commission. So it it still has to be approved by you all, but it'll be based on my recommendation.
Right, okay, thank you.
Okay, um, okay, the next section is twenty six dash six. This section deals with the qualifying. Um, what I did here is that I combined section twenty six dash six and twenty six dash fifteen. Um. Primarily for the reason being that it fit better in this section. So the part in yellow is largely remains the same. As what's in twenty six fifteen currently. Um, what's in green, highlighted in green, it's a an increase of the qualifying fee. Which is currently a hundred dollars, now it'll be two hundred, and that's based off of uh a charter amendment. I also specified there that one percent of the salary of the office sought. Is required as an election assessment fee, and that's required by Florida statutes. I also specified to make it very clear that. A person who seeks to be a candidate needs to have been a resident of the city. For no less than three hundred and sixty five days, and I spelt it out in days rather than years so that it's very clear that it's three hundred and sixty five days. Another significant change is that we're proposing that the qualifying period for the elections be moved up a week. So right now, the code current currently provides for the qualifying period to be held between the eighty fourth and eighty first day. Preceding the election. We're proposing that it be moved to the ninety second and eighty eighth day. So that's essentially moving it a week earlier and adding an extra day. And still maintaining the same amount of hours. Uh, section twenty six dash seven, uh this deals with supplemental qualifying period. So in the event that. There are two candidates on a ballot that have qualified, excuse me, or for a particular race. In the unfortunate event that either death, removal. Or withdrawal of a candidate results in only one candidate being on the ballot. Then there'll be a supplemental qualifying period of two days. So. If after qualifying, let's say for, and I'm just picking up a seat, let's say for seat four. There's two candidates that have qualified. If after the qualifying period has ended. One of those candidates, either because of death, the withdrawal of of themselves. Or they're removed from qualifying because they were determined to be unqualified. And only one person still remains on that ballot. Then we would have an extra two days of qualifying. To see if there's someone else that would qualify to run along with that with that person. This would only be if the ballots have not been finalized by Miami-Dade County. If they've already been finalized and printed, then that that person would be deemed automatically elected. Okay?
Before you move on, Maricia?
Yes.
On um twenty twenty six five?
Mm-hmm.
Did you say that um two things? You said that it had to be a voter of the city?
Of Miami-Dade County, excuse me.
Okay, because it here it says Miami-Dade.
Yes, Miami-Dade County. And the reason why I put Miami-Dade County is because if I'm unable to find a resident of the city. Then we have the option to ask the supervisor of elections to designate one of their staff members. Or we can also choose a county judge. Um, there's a list that they provide that we're able to choose from to serve as a third member.
Okay, and also I, as I read this, I don't assume that it's uh requires the approval of the commission.
The designation of the members, yes. So it says right there, um.
Okay, cuz the city commission shall also designate. Okay, I got it, got it. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, moving on to. Section twenty six nine, names of qualified candidates to be printed on an election ballot. Uh, those are minor changes that I included in there. Um, I included the election assessment fee, which is required by state law, as I mentioned. And also spelled out for it to be three hundred and sixty five days. And referencing chapter twenty six dash six specifically as far as the qualifying requirements. Twenty six dash ten installation of new officers. This one is also because or as a result of the charter amendments.
So the green ones or the blue ones?
The green ones are related to charter amendments. So this um after a general or a runoff election. Uh, these, the results will be certified or, or excuse me, will be accepted by the city commission. And the swearing in would take place on the fourteenth day after those results have been certified. Regardless of whatever that day is. Generally, the supervisor of elections is really good at certify, at quickly certifying the results. Especially when it's the midterms because it's. There isn't that high of a voter turnout as there would be for a presidential. During presidentials, for example, this past one that we had, i- it was delayed a little bit, but not by much. Either way, it would still occur within that same month. Unless it's a runoff election, obviously, it would be in December.
So we have a a set period for the runoff or do we align with the county?
So no, so the runoff, those are considered standalone, so we we set that ourselves. The only thing that they have asked is that we give them ample time, which we already do. There are some municipalities that hold their runoff elections two weeks after the general election. And that's a very quick turnaround for them to be able to get all the ballots out, you know, in a timely fashion. So we give them almost a whole month to be able, because we hold ours in December, first week in December. Section twenty six dash twelve elections. Um, if you look at paragraph F. So the charter also now provides for a determination of a winner. If after a runoff election, there's a tie in the unlikely event of there being a tie. So the only thing that the charter says is that the manner in which a winner is determined would be set by ordinance. So I left that blank so that you all can, excuse me, so that you all can give us some some direction. Of course, we can. Propose something for you all. Um, but really, this would be something that we would look to you to tell us specifically what you would like to see happen. And I suggest, and it's my recommendation, that we spell it out specifically rather than just leaving it by. By lot, as some municipalities have it, because that just leaves it to, you know, whatever. The whim is at the moment, leaves it for interpretation.
By lot, do you mean like?
By lot. So basically what that means. By the pulling straws, pulling name out of a hat. So what I'm asking is for for a specific procedure to be established.
You'll make a recommendation.
I can make the recommendation, but I will also look for you guys to to guide us. In that same section, paragraph J. This deals specifically with um again, the commencement of the terms.
Rock, paper, scissors?
Yeah. So this deals specifically with the terms. It it reiterates um the fourteenth day of when the term will commence. Section twenty six dash thirteen eliminates a a section there that had or that dealt with. Uh, the period of time when the city went through redistricting and it just included some specific dates that are no longer relevant. So we're just taking that out. In twenty six thirteen, paragraph E, we're specifying that the term commenced. That the meaning of the term is deemed to be commenced upon being sworn in into office. Rather than just leaving it as election. And as I mentioned, twenty six fifteen is completely crossed out because that was incorporated into twenty six dash six now. Twenty six fourteen. We are clarifying that resignation is based on the effective date of said resignation. And really, that's it. The other one is a minor one that references the correct section in the charter. When it has to do to qualifications and of the code as well.
Okay, does anyone have any questions? I think you were pretty thorough, Maricia.
I have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
So can you go over the extra two days for qualifying period? You said that um the parameters are are death, if they withdraw or what what else?
They're removed.
Or they're removed or or they do not qualify?
Well, no, if if they've already, the supplemental period. Assumes that the people that are on the ballot, the two names that are on the ballot, have been duly qualified. So either death.
Death.
Withdrawal, which they withdrew themselves from consideration. Or removal, meaning that for some reason, within that time period, there was a a question about their qualifications. And they were removed by a court order.
I I I think the only one that should be there is death. Um, I don't think if there, I think if there's two candidates and the other one withdraws or they're removed. I think that the other one that does wanna go on and is qualified should automatically. Be elected. Um, I think it needs to be an emergency, you know, um. that obviously qualifies as that. So, uh, I think the other two perhaps could be removed.
So I did have this discussion.
Or tell me why they should stay.
So I had a discussion with the city attorney and he can explain it a lot better than I can.
Yeah.
Sure, put me on the spot.
I- it's from a city standpoint versus a candidate standpoint. So it's beneficial for the candidate. If your opponent drops out for whatever reason, I'm good, right? From a city standpoint, you want more competition for the seat so the electorate has more choice. So you sort of have to look at it from a city standpoint versus a candidate standpoint. Um, but I, I understand your point with death or incapacity, you know, this, if somebody becomes a paraplegic or, you know, somewhere they can't function.
Yeah.
Um, but that's just something for you to consider. Of course, you know, you can all do what you want, but, um, um, that, that's the, the reasoning behind it, that from a electoral standpoint, it's better for have more choices than less choices.
Okay. And then another one that I don't know if we could, uh, regulate this or not, but when it comes to qualifications, is there a way that perhaps we could do a background check on, on the candidates? Obviously, if some of these candidates have something that is shady in their background, they could be disqualified.
Uh, we can check state law. I don't know about background checks. I mean, some other jurisdictions have, for example, you only have a residency requirement. Uh, some other cities say if you've been convicted of a crime, you can't, um, things of that. So you can set some of those parameters. Uh, I don't know if actually conducting a background check is something that the city clerk can be authorized to do under state law. I, I think state law may preclude that.
Yeah, so under state law, the only authority that I, well, actually, I don't have any authority. I'm only ministerial. So I can only accept the, the documents, make sure that they're complete on their face. And if they're complete, they pay the qualifying fees, then they're duly qualified. I don't have the authority to investigate, to determine whether someone meets the residency requirements or if they have a criminal background, purely ministerial.
So you'd have, you'd have to set it, you'd have to set a parameter in your code, for example, conviction, anyone convicted of a crime can't run or, because if you do a background check, what do you get out of the background check? Maybe they declared bankruptcy, does that invalidate them? Uh, maybe they have really bad credit, does that invalidate them? You know, so you'd have to be more specific in your code as to what qualifications you, because ultimately, you're the arbiters of what, even residency, you know, you say a resident, what does it mean to be a resident?
Yeah. Well, I mean, a criminal background check, not a credit check. I mean, something where, I mean, what we're trying to achieve here is we don't want a criminal sitting here on the dais, you know?
To the clerk's point, though, when you submit for qualification, we on staff and the city clerk has no authority to verify the information that's been submitted by the candidate.
But to Vice Mayor's point, if you've been convicted of a crime and that is a factual, that's something that you if you put, we would, not we, the city would know, the police department would know.
Well, if you put that, so let's say you put in your code, you can't be convicted of a crime.
Right.
And you come and apply and say, I've never been convicted of a crime. The city clerk, I, city manager, no one has the authority to verify the information that's been submitted by the candidate. That's up to the voters. If they find out after the fact that in fact he lied, then he's going to be disqualified or he should be disqualified or removed from office.
But so can, if we added that as a question, can that person then later be disqualified if they lied?
You'd have to set it as a qualification in your code.
So I, I do like, um, I, I don't, I'm still putting it together in my head, but I ca- I do like this conversation and I'm wondering, while I understand that Mauricio can't do it, um, is maybe as a commission is can we, once we, let's say, we, we, we can't be doing backgrounds on everybody who we think may run or whatever, right? But once they've put themselves in the, in the public forum as a candidate, uh, can we just, uh, just have a standard policy that, okay, resolution, whatever, uh, to do a background check on the current candidate? That wouldn't, might include some of us, you know?
You do, you wouldn't have the authority to do that.
No, we can't.
That's up to the voters, not up to you.
No, I mean, I know that that's how it's been. It's up to the adversarial process, right? And if your, and if your opponent doesn't air out your, your felony, then that's the opponent's problem and ultimately the community's problem if, if you have a, um, a bad actor who ends up winning, but.
It's just like you're, you're, for example, you submit financials, right? Nobody vets those financials. You have to be truthful in what you do. If later on, it's figured, it's found out that you were untruthful, then you have consequences. But staff, the city clerk has no authority, the city has no authority to go and investigate your financials and start doing, checking your tax returns and start doing that to verify whether you've been truthful in your application. It has to be accepted as is and it's up to the candidate to be truthful. If they're not, then that's a consequence that
The problem is that the, that the consequence, by the time it comes, they're already sitting here, right? And I don't mean that like by us, I mean, I mean, but you understand?
I, I understand, but you don't have the, but you don't have the authority.
But to, but to the, to the question.
But don't we have, don't we have, don't we do background checks for employees?
Right.
Can't we use the same, uh, mechanism for a select group of people who have put themselves in the public forum as candidates?
You don't have the authority. They're not employees. They don't, you don't control them. They answer only to the voters. They don't answer, they don't answer to you as a body, as a commission. You don't have authority over them because they don't answer to you. They don't answer to the city clerk. They don't answer to the city manager or me. They answer only to the voters.
But if it's a, one second, but, but if it's a, uh, condition, I mean, if you know that that, you're going to be subjected to that by virtue of becoming a candidate, uh, then, I mean, isn't, do you understand what I'm saying?
I understand what you're saying. I just, you don't, you don't have the authority.
Criminal is going to be a criminal. Uh, wait, let, let Commissioner Viscar finish.
Uh, no, please, go, go ahead.
So who, who has the authority to do that? Or who could grant us the authority to do?
You, you don't. It's, when you go to the voters, the voters have to decide. You don't, there's no test, there's no competency test. There's no background check test to be a candidate. You just have to qualify. You have to be a resident in whatever qualifications you put. Can't be convicted of a crime. But once that candidate says, I've never been convicted of a crime, you don't have a mechanism to be able to go out there and verify all the information that's been provided.
So we cannot prevent a criminal from running?
If he lies, no.
But we can put it on, on the qualifying paperwork.
You, you can say that.
We could ask that question.
Absolutely.
We cannot.
And if they lie.
Confirm it, right? I mean, unless something comes out.
But if they.
For example, you can lie on your financials all day long. Nobody's checking your financials, even your disclosures that you do every year. Nobody's checking those. That's only in case an issue comes up after the fact and then they look at what you've disclosed. But nobody, nobody verifies the information that you provide, even on a yearly basis.
The problem is, I understand that it's, it's the adversarial process, right? If I'm running against Alex and, and Alex knows that I, you know, I have a misdemeanor or whatever, and he would, he would, uh, air it out. And he's like, don't vote for this one because look what she did, right? And I guess we're relying on that. But the, the problem is that of course Alex is going to say that and, and, and we don't, we no longer have, um, we have so much disinformation going on and, and the, you know, the fake videos and all of that that you start wondering if, if my adversary is not, you know, of course, I'm using Alex as an example, but like if my adversary is the source of that information, it's already tainted because he has a, a personal, uh, he has something personal to gain from that.
That's politics.
Coming from a govern, uh, what should be a neutral government body, then that would be a more reliable source of information.
But you can't.
No, you are explaining, we just don't like the answer.
But, um, I don't like the answer because.
It's just a residency. You say you're a resident of Sunny Isles Beach. The city clerk has no authority. I have no authority to go follow you home and make sure you live there, check your mortgage, check your lease agreement. See how long you've been living there. Check your water bill, check your electric bill. I don't, nobody has the authority to do that. If you come on here and you lie about your residency, there's ways to challenge your residency and have you removed. But that's up to the electorate and there's no authority for the city clerk to vet the information that's, he's purely ministerial. And you as a governing body don't control, it's up to the voters, not up to you all.
But then for something like a, a, let's say a criminal background or like, and we had the residency challenges in the past, right? Like they own an apartment here, but they don't really live here. We, we've had those challenges before or they haven't been here a whole year. Um, then it falls on either on, on the adversarial party who has something to gain and therefore reasons for people not to believe them or on the, on the upper, the residents who are not going to spend their money. And like that, do you understand? Like they have other things to spend their money on rather than to hunt down a particular.
Completely understand your argument. It's just that he's the supervisor of elections when it comes to city elections and he has very limited authority under Florida law.
I'm not asking Mauricio to be that person. I understand.
He's in charge of the elections. He's in charge of qualifying. We have no role in qualifications. He does.
Oh, I, I want to let Commissioner Joseph go, but if, I just want to have one question. W- once someone is elected and they get an ID pass, they get access to insurance, however small there's, there's a, a paycheck, isn't that person in effect an employee?
No, you are, you are not employees of the city. You all are elected officials. I can't fire you. He can't fire you. The city commission can't really fire you.
Commissioner Viscar's point, there's no way to do a background check the same way that you would, I, once elected. I'm not saying a, a, as a candidate, once elected.
Right. You answer to the voters.
Okay, Commissioner Joseph.
The voters can fire you.
I understand.
Through a recall, we can't do anything against you.
On the candidate form, Mauricio, we can add a line um, regarding whether you've had a, uh, previous criminal record?
Yes, on the candidate oath.
Put it in your code first.
Yeah, we have to put it in the code and we can add it to the oath.
To add that line, whatever's necessary.
It's a step forward.
And then you'd have to, we'd have to sort of criminal, it could be a misdemeanor. I don't know if you want to do misdemeanors or just felonies, um.
It'd have to be very defined.
We have to include what? Traffic violations?
No, if, if.
Want to have it at a certain level.
If the intent is, is to, to ask the question, have, do you have any criminal convictions? To be specific as to what is defined as a criminal conviction.
For example, have you ever been convicted, convicted of a felony? Like, for example, have you ever been convicted of a felony?
Is, what question do we ask on our employment, um, uh, forms? Do we have that question?
I don't know.
I'm asking the manager.
Yeah, so I would leave it at felony.
Do we have that question in our employment?
Felon on the commission.
We is to, but we do not any longer.
Okay.
The law.
Okay. Commissioner Stivison, you've been quiet. Did you have anything to ask or add?
Well, if you can be creative and bring something to us to add to the qualifications, that we can. You know, like think about it, because we're not going to do this right now. We are talking and everybody wants to find a way to, like Jerry was saying, not to have a felon sitting down here. So, um, just do some research if you can and maybe bring something that we can actually put there as a qualification.
We'll work with the city clerk to get best practices.
One more question. It's a twofold question. So let's say you have a candidate, you have two candidates running for the same seat. And then candidate A publishes the criminal record of candidate B. And we get wind of that, right? We learn of that. Can we, if they lie on their application, can we disqualify that candidate, candidate B?
Not you.
Even if you see it.
You as the commission have no authority.
No, not, not, not me. I mean, I'm saying the, the Mauricio who is.
It depends at what stage they would be. He, once they've qualified, they've qualified. You'd have to go to court and I've, I've been involved in one of those.
The point, Riley. By the time you go to court, the elections are over.
But that's the law.
Right.
I, I was involved, I was involved with a residency challenge with one of the commissioners years ago, two thousand and fourteen, I think it was. And we literally, we had to go to court and they tried to remove him from the ballot because they claimed that he temporarily lived in the house and actually was living in another city. They ended up not proving their case and he was not removed from the ballot. But it has to go to court. The court can do that and the courts are even reluctant to do that because you're disenfranchising your voters.
Right.
If you want to run for office and there's twenty thousand people that want to elect you, you can't disenfranchise all those voters. It has to go through a legal process. And that's part of the issue is.
And I guess maybe some of these things are, are heard on an expedited basis, I would hope.
Typically, yeah, I mean, that, that particular litigation involved the supervisor of elections invited, involved the candidate, involved the city. You know, the, all the parties come and yeah, typically the courts will look at that. And that's pre-election on, but the ballots had already been published.
But it, you know, it falls on the candidate to pay for that as well. Right. Mauricio, did you have anything that you wanted to, do you need more clarification from us?
No, I think.
We could talk about this all night. We have a lot of ideas.
Then consider that they don't lie on the form.
One, you said that before.
There's a second fold, yeah. No, no, the two-fold, yeah, yeah. So the other part would be, okay, so let's say this candidate gets elected, right? And then after the fact, they're already sitting here, okay? After the fact, we learned that they have a beautiful criminal record. What happens then, right?
You, you go to court and you remove them.
Court and we remove them. Or does the governor have to remove them? The governor has removed.
The governor has some authority, so not just, so let's say that driving home from a meeting, a commissioner gets arrested for DUI or gets arrested for some kind of felony. The governor can suspend and remove you until that conviction occurs or is prosecuted. It happens all the time. If you go on the governor's website, there's all these administrative orders with regards to suspension of a public officials that have been charged with crimes. But the governor has some ability to suspend. But if you as a commissioner, if you, in fact, it's in your code, if you violate your certain portions of your charter, the only recourse is to take you to the state attorney's office or to go to court and file and the commission would authorize an action removing Commissioner A because Commissioner A lied on their qualifications and so on and so forth, and then the courts would take over.
So the commission at that time would have to vote to take it to court.
To take, to initiate that process.
Okay.
Yeah.
So it's, there's something there. Okay.
Yeah, because we wouldn't, I, the city manager, city clerk wouldn't have the authority to initiate litigation on behalf of the city because they would be on behalf of the city. Hopefully, all of this is purely academic and would never happen.
Well, similar to what's going on in Pele Bay now.
Worst case scenario.
Residency is usually the issue, although in a, in your jurisdiction, it's very intimate. It's hard to, in bigger cities, sometimes residence, that, that's the ones that I've seen are residency challenges.
So there, there was one more point, um, mayor. Um, in discussions with Commissioner Stivison, she asked for information on offering early voting in the city. I did reach out to the supervisor of elections. I got a response back um, saying that at the moment, they weren't looking for any additional sites. Um, given the fact that we have two in close proximity, or three actually in, in close proximity, one being the Evans Tower Library, the other being the North Miami Beach Library and north, uh, yeah, uh, surf site, on the surf site. Um, however, I, I don't know if you want to give some update, nothing else. Um, she, Commissioner Stivison did have a conversation also with the supervisor of elections and I believe if I understood correctly, there is a possibility.
Yeah, it was last night. She wasn't aware of it and she asked me for your emails and all the emails. I sent it to her and they're going to go back to us. So whenever you're bringing back this item, we will have, uh, another look at it.
Okay.
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 Uh, that was the point too, be able to give, um, um, the service to a resident here in town uh, and to open one of the location as an early voting location.
All right, thank you, Mauricio. Uh, we are over time. Are we okay to keep going? Is everyone okay?
We have one more item or no?
Two more.
Two more. All right. My item, I think, well, it might be long. So, um, widening of the sidewalks, uh, I've been actually holding this back for, uh, some commission meetings and, um, ironically, talking about scooters, this is actually a good time to discuss this as well. So we've had residents for, as far as I can remember, asking, why can't we widen the sidewalks? If I can remember, I think Vice Mayor mentioned this years ago, the first one to mention it. So on Collins, we have widened that strip that is at Winston Towers down to Town Center Park. Um, and I had asked years ago, the deputy manager, what do we actually own along the, the sidewalk with the arcade plazas, meaning, is that, um, landscaping? Is that ours or is that theirs? And then, you know, I think all of us have been supportive of widening in the sidewalk, but this is more of, you know, how does everyone feel about this? Because do we want to look into it potentially piecemeal, like one area at a time? Um, do we, is there an appetite for this right now from the commission?
I don't think we have a choice but to look at it piecemeal.
Right.
Um, and I, I wasn't thinking about, okay, I, I, I've, because I thought that that was, I didn't think that was an option. I don't know what, oh, what, what, um, landscaping you're talking about, but.
You know, where we have the, the palm, well, it seems like it's theirs. It's the palm trees with the shrubbery to the, it, it borders, it's, it's. to the, it borders, it's, it's.
Like where Timo is?
The whole, the whole edge of all the arcade plazas have, uh, uh, landscaping.
Yeah.
So it's about how, how many feet is that? That's at least three feet?
We don't have all of, as much as I thought.
Okay.
Um, we have in front of this plaza right next door.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and what it is, is it's a landscape and lighting easement agreement. So that what is the, like three feet west of our western edge on the sidewalk is an easement from arcade to have the light, the lighting, the shrubberies and the day palms. So it's that plaza, it's, um, down by one seventieth and in front of TD Bank.
Okay.
We don't have all of them.
I remember this coming up when we were replacing the lamp post, like way back.
Right. So to, um, widen the sidewalk, we would have to remove the trees, the shrubbery and the lighting.
You'd have to amend, you'd have to amend your easement as well. And you'd have to have permission from arcade to do that.
But why don't we start along Intercoastal Park?
Correct. Yeah. I was just going to say that because we do, we can do it there right now. And we've been talking about that for a while as well. It's very, very, very.
Yes, we're doing it at Intercoastal Sports Park when that is done and then we can move to the north side.
So at, at the Winston Towers area, were we able to do that only because we had purchased that in anticipation of the bridge?
Yes.
That's the only reason?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yes, we own, we have that easement there.
All right.
We paid a lot of money for that side.
Worth it.
For the bridge, for the bridge that didn't happen.
Um, Vice Mayor, what, what is your opinion?
Yeah, I think we got to talk to some of these stakeholders and see if we could get the easements and you know, I think this is, uh, an investment we'll have to do. Uh, I think this is probably the most important investment we could do. I mean, we need to, going back to the scooter discussion, we need to find a way to make it safer for, for everybody, for all of our residents. The scooters, the bikes, the pedestrians, all of that. So, yeah, we have a nice job ahead of us.
So one thing I just want to mention, um, so you would have to, I mean, think about it, almost all of arcades, um, that easement abuts the parking lot. So now you're going to have vehicles parked right next to the walkway without, without the buffer. And then either we would have to find a way to move trees east or in the center or something like that. That would be a huge expense and probably kill a lot of trees, but just keep in mind what the trade-off is.
The footage as opposed to the expense.
I want, well, that's exactly it. I wanted to have the discussion to see, you know, if you could look into, is it even worth it? If we're, if we're going to get one foot and then we lose all the trees, uh, and you know, how much work do you need to do in order to give us that information?
And if it's an easement for a particular purpose, we may not be able to do it for a different purpose. Um, but I think exploring it along the Intercoastal, which is, you know, start on the easier. And then, uh, internally, um, on North Bay Road, like where, where, um, there, we have the wide one. I forget, you know, I don't know my directions. So on, on the west by the, by the.
West side of North Bay Road between one seven four and one eight three.
Thank you, that one. So that one's already wide. But on the other side it's thin, but you have all this grass like that belongs to, to, um, Marion Towers, then maybe that's something we can talk to them about and widen that.
We also have a landscaping strip between the sidewalk and the road there. Um, where we had planted trees to Tree City USA, with million trees.
Those trees because they also provide, it's not just the shade, it's not just the shade. It's a, it's a buffer from distracted drivers. I wish we had put the palm trees uh, on the other side of the sidewalk along Collins.
Mm-hmm.
Right? So I, I wouldn't, like, we, we did that on North Bay Road in front of Beach Place because we didn't have trees. We had grass and full of poop. So I was happy to see that go. And we have the wider sidewalk there. But I, I, if we could explore going in, in that area and just leaving those trees alone. Um, because I do prefer, um, I do think they provide some protection from the distracted driver.
We are also looking into that area. Um, Julio's team is studying, um, an official bike way, you know, some kind of scooter solution in that area as well. So we'll look at all of that at the same time in that area.
All right. Next item?
That might be.
Yours? Next one is yours?
Yes. So, okay. Um, I believe I just wanted to codify the fact that, uh, for Crema, uh, the operation, the hours of operation, so if we could please discuss that. Because at certain locations, they have, um, dinner hours, they don't, they're only open till five.
Commissioner, I sent you an email. The, the agreement that this commission approved has the minimum operating hours from seven AM to nine PM as a minimum.
Every day.
Um, it actually says, let me see, my apologies.
Would like to have it on the record.
It says during the minimum business hours of seven AM to nine PM Monday through Saturday and seven AM to nine PM on Sunday for a minimum of ninety-eight hours a week.
Okay. So that would be different than some of their other location hours. So I'm happy to hear that.
Has franchises, so.
Okay. But our location would have those hours.
Our agreement specifically says that, yes.
Perfect. Thank you.
I know we're almost done, but I just saw a text that the audio is not on.
Yes, we, we know.
Okay. So that's like an hour ago that I, all right. Uh, next item is yours, Commissioner Joseph.
Yes. Okay. So it's come to my attention that, um, Winston, the Winston Towers, um, presidents have, uh, voiced some interest in having the city take over their park. It's Winston Tower seven hundred. We have many residents that are against it. And I don't see the benefit to the city of ever taking over that park. But I'd like to throw it open to the commission for discussion.
Well, I'll, I'll, go ahead.
Yeah, go ahead, Commissioner Viscar.
Okay. Well, um, as, as, um, I stated, and I think it was last month when we were talking about the, the two parks. Like we have, we're supposed to maintain a green space ratio. And I don't believe that that, um, park is being counted towards it because it's not ours, but it does exist. So it would help towards that. Um, so what I, what I found interesting, I, I, I don't, I like the idea of the city, uh, taking over because we can make it nicer and we can manage it and, you know, but, but with that will also come all the complaints that are associated with, with that park. But their, their letter of intent, I, you know, you call it, what did you call it? Conveyance? I, I, their letter of intent, uh, it says, their, you, your, their unanimous intent to have the city of Sunny Isles Beach to provide the assistance with care, upkeep, maintenance and security. And, and I, um, and that doesn't sound like they're giving us the park. And I feel like Plaza of the, I, I want Plaza of the Americas to send this letter and to allow the city of Sunny Isles Beach to assist us with our care, upkeep, maintenance and security. Right? So, um, I don't, I don't feel that, at least the way this is written.
Oh, no, they want to lease it to us.
Feel like a conveyance and either you give it to us or you don't give it to us is my, is my view on that. The, the, the good part about it is it was something we can control. It has like a little marina. It would allow us to do, um, to do things, right? And, and to fix our ratio, which we have a problem with our ratio. Um, but, but it's not for us to do all the work and then, um, and that's it. Because if, if that's the way that plays out, I, I will copy and paste and put Plaza of the Americas and I'm going to get free, uh, uh, landscaping and security out of it.
Yeah, I don't think anyone's in support of maintaining anyone's private property using taxpayer dollars, so.
So I have a question. I, I, I know that, uh, you Stan and the mayor had a call with the Master Association. What, what happened? What was discussed in that call?
Basically, I told them the same thing, that we don't have any interest in having taxpayers uh, pay for their landscaping. And if they want to propose something to us, they need to come and propose it.
Yeah.
And they don't have any agreement between themselves, so.
Yeah, that's what I heard. I, I, like, I'm not sure, like, I, I hear one day that all of them are in agreement. Then I hear that some buildings are really not in agreement.
It was a courtesy call because they were requesting it.
Okay.
But it's up to them to figure it out on their own. This has been a conversation as far as I can, more than ten years. So it's up to them. It's their private property, but I don't think we have any intention of paying for somebody's landscaping using taxpayer dollars.
You have the, the, this, yeah, yeah. There's, yeah, it's been discussed many times.
Yeah.
And if so, I, I would like Plaza of the Americas just on the record, okay?
Why not the entire city?
Landscaping.
Yeah, okay. All right. So, uh, meeting adjourned. See everyone back at six thirty. Thank you.